Missing at least two board members tonight. Mark Doyle and Ilda Ray will not be here with us this evening. So with no further ado, let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. The first order of business is approval of the last meeting minutes on January 22nd. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made to approve the minutes by Katina. Is there a second?
My second.
Lisa seconded it. Any discussion on the minutes from January 22nd? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Okay. They're approved unanimously. Is there anybody signed up to speak under public comment? None? Okay. Wow, okay. So that's like the first time since I can remember. So we'll go right into the superintendent's reports for us. And I know you got the packet, but I'm sure there's some things that Dr. Youngberg would like to highlight for us.
Absolutely. Welcome, everyone. Good evening. One of the things I'm really proud about is this new format that we've set up to showcase some of the highlights, the wonderful things that are happening in the district. So I'm going to just move them on the screen. You also have a copy in front of you so the people at home can see them. And then the good thing about this new format is that we can then advertise all the wonderful things that are happening in the district on our website and social media posts. So it's sort of a win-win for everyone to do it this way.
That's great.
But as you can tell from the text we sent you in the packet, the very first thing that we're proud of is that the Mirror and Windows Literary Magazine earned Superior in recognizing excellence in art and literary magazines, or Realm, organized by the National Council of Teachers of English. And I know last year, this group came and gave everyone a copy of their magazine. So you should be, those of you who are on the board are familiar with it, but they got some national recognition, which is fabulous. We're really proud of those high school writers. And Julia Hank in that picture is actually the one that wrote that beautiful article that showcased about me that I was so touched by. It was one of the nicest things I've ever seen written, so I was very proud of the writers. Next, yeah, you want to clap? All right. Clapping is good. That hasn't happened a lot. That's awesome.
That's great.
Let's keep that up. All right, next up, we have Alfonso Vasquez Villar is Wyndham High School. He's a senior here, and he was just named the Connecticut Bill Lee Male Athlete of the Year. And apparently, this is a coveted recognition. He is the top male athlete in the state of Connecticut.
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive. So there he is in action in that picture. And so congratulations to Alfonso. Next up, we have a celebration of some funds that have come our way. Wyndham Middle School received a grant from Technology Global Partners and nominated by Willamantick Mobile Manager. I'm not sure how to say his name. I'm not going to say it correctly.
Anshmu Hajar.
Thank you. Hopefully, that's the correct pronunciation. But we are happy to receive funds always, especially since we spent the day working on the budget. So congratulations to Wyndham Middle School. And along the same lines of athletics, Wyndham High School junior Nicole Peralta named as an Athlete of the Week by The Chronicle for averaging 11 points and four assists per game. Congratulations to Nicole. Moving right along, Wyndham High School welcomed the eighth grade prospective students, excuse me, and families to open house to learn what a great school the high school is. I know we got a lot of positive feedback about that event, so congratulations to the high school for hosting a great open house. Next up, we have Natchog School. They have an after-school program every Monday and Wednesday for fourth and fifth graders to play basketball. And here, it's coordinated by one of our paraprofessionals. So we're happy to see, anytime we can get kids engaged in fun instructional activities like this after school works for us. So congratulations to Natchogs and the fourth and fifth grade students taking part in that program.
That's great.
Now, we have to clap for everything, right? And almost last but not least, two more. State Senator May Flexer came to read to our students for National Read Aloud Day. I think this picture is at Sweeney Elementary School. She read to the kindergarten class. They were intrigued by her dress because they said it looked like a ladybug. And they had a whole discussion about the pattern on her dress being like a ladybug in some story. So we appreciate Senator May Flexer coming to our district.
She probably chose it purposely.
It might have been, but it took them a little off course in terms of the story. They were more interested in the pattern, but that's kindergarten, so.
That's great.
And our district attendance has greatly improved. It continues to improve. Our chronic absenteeism rate is down 3.2% from last year. And all schools continue to reinforce with students the importance of regular attendance. And I know the middle school just actually had a celebration, which I think they're going to reference in their presentation tonight, for students that had perfect attendance for the first 90 days of school. And I'm not going to steal your thunder, Dr. Ware, Mr. Harris, but you'll hear more about our attendance initiative coming up soon. So those are the awards and recognitions that we have for you this board meeting. And we'll just keep going through the packet.
Yeah, sure. Unless anybody has any questions about what's been presented thus far.
It's just feel-good kind of stuff, right? Congratulations. So next on the agenda is the Awards of Excellence. This is just a reminder that there's a ceremony coming up on Tuesday, February 25th. It's at 6:30 PM. It's being held at Wyndham Middle School in the auditorium. There's also a snow date, although we haven't had any of those since we made adjustments to the calendar, sort of like the year I bought the generator and then the power never went out, same kind of thing. So we invite all of you to attend the Awards of Excellence ceremony on February 25th at 6:30. And I know one of our board, you want to mention that you're going to be, no? You want to wait? Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
We'll let her wait. All right, next up, we have the Personnel Report. I don't know if there's any questions about that.
Did anybody have any questions about what was in your packet with the Personnel Update Again, I think we're all appreciative that we're getting this on a regular basis, and this is good information for us to have. Thank you to you and the staff for pulling it together with the detail that you have done.
So the format still works and it's great, excellent?
Yeah.
That's great. All right, last but not least, and I think I'm going to let Mr. Weathers speak to this. This is our Accountability Index. So briefly, we gave you some information about our, sort of our district's report card and all the items that were evaluated on. So I'm just going to let you take it over for a couple of minutes about, all about our Accountability Index.
Good evening. So like Dr. Youngberg said, we have our Accountability Index results for the state. They came out about two weeks ago. We've been getting these results for five years. It's a sort of a comprehensive report card for school districts and schools, more than just singling out single test scores. And I know we've talked about like just one measure. So this looks at 12 different indicators from student achievement in math and science and English Language Arts at all grades. Looks at student growth, chronic absenteeism, which we just mentioned, college and career readiness, students taking courses as well as passing certain exams, graduation rates. There's a measurement for middle school and ninth grade students being on track to graduate and also arts access and physical education as well. So those make up the 12 indicators. This year, they brought back science. It was gone, but now they have the science assessment. And they also have Last Links, which is our English proficiency test that's also being measured as well. So the total index from Wyndham Public Schools went up slightly from 64.8 to 65. And I hate using the phrase "go up" because we have different indicators each year, so it could be somewhat misleading, although compared to other districts, that was trending in the right direction. This is a very comprehensive report, so just trying to pick everything all at once would just be too long, in my opinion. So I'll just highlight a couple of things. The district strength that I noticed is student achievement and all of our indicators, specifically ELA and math, has been trending at a faster rate than the state. So that is obviously a good thing, and we're proud of that. And a district area for growth compared to the year before, we had a spike in chronic absenteeism, which was markedly higher, although, as Dr. Youngberg just mentioned, we're tracking lower this year. Several schools, including the middle school, is tracking a lot lower than they were last year. So we feel that will take care of itself at the end of this report card, and we'll find that out next February. I know you can't wait. Then also, Wyndham Center School was acknowledged as a school of distinction for growth in both math and ELA for high-need students and students, and all students in mathematics.
Clap on that one.
Yeah. And just so everybody knows, it's the fourth year we've had one of our schools. This is actually the second year Wyndham Center's done it. They did it a couple of years ago. It's the fourth year in a row we've had a school make that distinction, so that was pretty great. And then, and I think that is pretty much it for now, but I'm willing to entertain any questions. And at some point, we could obviously at a future meeting dig in deeper to all the indicators because it's pretty comprehensive.
Any questions, comments that any board members would like to make?
I'm not as familiar with this, but one of the things I noticed was the high rate for our high-need students, very close to state levels. I thought that was pretty terrific.
Yeah, that is true. And in some schools, several of our schools, we actually have higher performance from our high-need students than the state average of high-need students.
In fact, you know, building on that, you know, when I'm up at the Capitol and I'm doing my job-job, which is lobbying for universal health care, I run into a lot of my allies and friends from around the state, particularly some of the other colleagues that I have that are from towns that have sort of the same demographics as Wyndham does. And they've been coming up to me and saying, when they see these things, what's going on here? Like with a hint of jealousy that their towns aren't performing the same way. So I think it's a testament to the hard work that the staff and the administrators are doing. And I know there's always a long way for us to go, but I think that we need to acknowledge the progress that we're making in certain areas and how much work it takes on the behalf of the staff and the students and the administrators to try to figure out what's the right combination of things that need to happen to make progress in these areas for the kids.
Absolutely. And I think that people don't realize some of the challenges this district faces and the fact that we're still moving forward in the right direction in so many areas. We can't forget about it. It is true, we have a lot of work to do. That's not going to ever, it's not going to change, but we are making progress. So thank you for noticing. We appreciate that.
Well, it's, other people are noticing, so that's good. Yeah, Tracy?
I have a question. When I looked at this the end of last week or over the weekend, I don't remember, my two charts are exactly the same.
So we have an update, and I could send you?
I looked at both the charts, and I'm like, the numbers are all exactly the same.
Mine are different, but you didn't?
Oh, we sent an update. I apologize. It wasn't initially the same, but now they should be different. 1718 should look different than 1819.
Should we send another email?
I sent it by email on Monday, Ms. Youngberg.
Okay.
But yes, you are correct. We noted, thank you. Sorry about that.
You weren't going crazy.
Thank you, Ms. Testa. I'm sorry. I just looked at the packet and glanced over the other stuff. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the Accountability Index?
Just a comment that I think our teachers are miracle workers, considering all the socio-emotional needs that our students have.
Sure.
And having them focus on education.
Absolutely.
So thank you to the teachers.
Okay, well, that's a great bunch of information that was just shared with us under the superintendent's reports. And thank you, everybody. Now, we're on to committee reports. Finance and Audit Committee. You know, I didn't plan ahead that Mark would be recovering from surgery. I didn't stop to think that he would be recovering from surgery, and I should have asked him what he wanted to report. I will just jump in because I was at the meeting last week. And then Rita or Dr. Youngberg, if there's any, or other people who were there, if there's anything you want to add. We are, the staff is working mightily to make sure that we're going to be closing the year in the black rather than in the red. And it's, you know, just when we think we're getting close to doing that, we find something else that we didn't anticipate. And so there's a lot of work going on, on a day-to-day basis, I would say, to keep on top of that. We have been asked by the Board of Finance to have a report for them on February 19th, when they meet. We will be having our budget workshop that night, so we won't be there. But they have asked just for a memo from the board about where we will be, I mean, where we think we are with making sure that we end the year on the right side of the ledger. And it's extremely close, like a fraction of a percent that we have to deal with here. So we have to just keep on top of it throughout the year. Is there anything you want to add on that front, Rita or Dr. Youngberg?
We're working on it, trying to make sure we...
Yeah. The other thing that we've been talking about is the budget for the next budget year. And we had a discussion at the meeting about how we want to be approaching the budget process, you know, this year. And so next Wednesday, the 19th, at 7:00 PM, will be a special meeting of the Board of Ed, and it will be the first of a couple of budget workshops that we have on our schedule. So this will be the board's first look at the proposed budget and what some different options are for us to be considering as we move forward. So I hope everybody on the board has that on their schedule, and that's going to be happening. And I'm trying to think of what else was, that we discussed there. Nothing? Anything that I?
Something that's on our agenda already about the Magnet School?
It's already on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, the tuition. We did discuss the tuition rate for the Magnet School, for the out-of-town students that come into the Magnet School. And so there's a recommendation that is coming out of that committee. We also are going to be talking about the budget transfers. We had a pretty, you know, detailed discussion about the budget transfers that are being recommended tonight also. So that's where we landed on the committee. Now, the committee was going to originally be meeting before this meeting, but we have decided for that committee, Mark Doyle and Dr. Youngberg conferred, and then I conferred with Dr. Youngberg on the Executive Committee. And the meetings that were supposed to happen tonight, we've pushed off until after we have our budget workshop because we feel that both committees will have some things to discuss in a lot more detail after we have our discussion as a board next week, so.
But we're still going to prepare the final statement, the statement of closing out the year for the Board of Finance for next week's meeting, correct?
Yes, yes. So, yeah, so they don't want anything big from us, just a short memo saying where we are. And I will just say on that front that the new chair of the Board of Finance, Tyler Griffin, has said that he would very much like to have the Board of Finance co-host a budget forum with the Board of Ed. And we're trying to close in on some dates that we might be able to do that. And the idea is to do it out in the Wyndhams, most likely at Barrow School. And I've talked to Dr. Youngberg about taking a look at their calendar. And so we're going to try to do that as a way to, you know, get out into the community once we have the proposed budgets so that we can be talking to the public. And I think it's great that the Board of Finance is saying that they want to do that with us. I think that's a good sign, so. Doesn't mean budgets are easy to get passed, but it's a good way to be talking to the public. So the Board of Finance, as well as the Board of Ed, can be hearing from the public, hearing the questions they have. And I know Tracy Lambert, when she was the chair of this board, and I, when I was the chair of the Board of Finance, co-hosted a forum at Barrow School. And it was very good for people to get to talk about stuff, so. Any questions on finance and audit? The other, oh, just one other quick thing on the town. The auditor that is doing the audit for this past year will be finishing up their work soon, and we will be scheduling a session where the Board of Ed can be present to hear what the auditor's report is. Because that was one of the things you may remember in the forensic analysis, that, you know, we needed to be paying more attention to what the audits said, so, or maybe what they didn't say. So we'll be on top of that, too. Okay?
Okay. So the only question I had, just to follow up, the budget book that will be produced for Friday in preparation for the 19th, is you want that electronically as well as in hard copy or just electronically or?
What's the wish of the board?
I would like to receive it electronically so I can look at it over the weekend.
This is a sort of draft?
This is the recommended initial, right? The first dip in?
Yeah, I think electronically, but I...
Follow-up's a paper version.
I do prefer hard copies, but since it may have another draft.
Does it lengthy?
Yeah.
Yes.
Something you could hurt somebody if you threw at them? Maybe a first copy we get electronically, and then the second copy we get in paper, just in the interest of paper.
Okay, fair enough. Makes sense.
Just the first one. I understand what you say because I go back and forth, too.
So we should just clarify, when do you think it would be ready to send to us electronically? Because I don't want to have people, people have any false expectations. The board members have any expectations that they're going to get it like five days ahead of time. I made a promise to Janet that she was not staying after work on Friday, so the end of Janet's workday on Friday, it will be ready to go.
And it's taking a half day.
That was funny.
It's waiting at 11:00 PM.
So we should expect it at the end of this week, then, since we're going to be meeting next Wednesday. And since we're going to be getting it days ahead of time, that would be great if people get a chance to start looking through it and thinking about any questions or suggestions or solutions to challenges that we may have moving forward. Okay? And I want to reiterate to the public that this does not mean whatever we start talking about next Wednesday is our first conversation. We have until the middle of March to present a final budget to the Board of Finance. So I don't want people to take a look at the first cut and say, that's it. There could be changes, so. Well, there were, I would guess there would definitely be, I mean, the first cut at the budget, not the first budget cut, but the first cut.
Presentation.
Like the first cut, I'm thinking of films, the first draft, the opening salvo, right? Yes. Okay, is that?
Thank you. Appreciate, yes, that's fine.
School Planning and Design Committee.
All right, everybody get comfortable because we're going to be here for a few minutes. I walked into this meeting, I told my husband, be in and out in less than an hour. And Dawn came prepared and threw everything at us, so I'm very grateful for that. But it was a lot to absorb all in one meeting. Because of January 2nd being a Thursday and there being no school, we didn't have a January meeting, and so she saved it all up for us. So building updates, the middle school had some damage to one of the baseball fields. Somebody was doing donuts on it with what looked like a truck. So that's some repairs that are going to have to happen in the not-too-distant future. Also, there was storm damage on the walkway to Mansfield Ave. A tree fell down and wrecked the fence a little bit. Scott Clermont and his Public Works Group were instrumental in helping us get it down because it was bigger than what we could handle within our department. So we're grateful for that, and Dawn will have to look in the spring for quotes on repairing the fence, the sections that were damaged. Building updates, I think that's all for building updates, and the rest of it kind of goes under capital projects. Last year, we were approved for a truck from Columbia Ford, and I have this all, I'm working on a spreadsheet, it's just not done yet. A truck for Columbia Ford, a truck. Dawn has gotten some quotes, and Columbia Ford came in with the most reasonable one. So she's looking at that. Padding for the middle school gym comes in just under budget, and that was in the 2019 capital improvement budget. She got it for $17,350, and they're going to throw in a free logo, and that's installed. There was one quote that was significantly less, but it wasn't, it didn't include installation, it didn't include a lot of the hardware, and so it was just going to continue to add on costs. And we thought that it would probably be more expensive in the long run than this one, and no free logo, so we're excited about that. And Dr. Ware's already weighed in on what color he wants them to be now, not black. So the North Wyndham School capital improvement for the portables, the floor has gotten spongy there, and so that's become a concern. It's not safe anymore. Upon looking at it, there was asbestos floor tiles, so we have to have that abated. So it's, it's going to be a very comprehensive project, but that was also included in the 2019 capital improvement. So she has bids out right now for the subfloor, shoring up the joists, the main floor, the ceiling grid, tiles, siding, and the roof. So it's going to get an overhaul. If I'm not mistaken, they were put there in the 1970s, so with some...
The temporaries.
Yeah, the temporary, the portable classrooms, that, you know, as our school population, especially our elementary school swelled after the 70s, we needed all that extra space. And hopefully, at some point in the not-too-too-distant future, but there's no end in sight for using them right now, so we have to bring them up to where they need to be. And then also in the 1920 capital improvement, the Wyndham Center principal's office has asbestos floor tiles that are starting to raise, and so we have a quote on that. Those will be replaced probably over the summer because the building has to be partitioned off in that section, students can't be in the whole building, those kind of things.
So you mean in the, oh, you said 1920. I said the 1920.
The one that we just passed in December, right?
At first, I thought you said 1920, 100 years ago.
No, in the 2019, 2020 capital improvement, the one that we just passed in December.
Okay.
This was all approved. Capital improvements for that, those will get done, asbestos floor removal and a new floor put down, and she's looking at different options for the new floor. The Wyndham Middle School restroom locker room renovation, new partition, sinks, replace the ceiling tiles that are damaged. She's going to have a walkthrough for that. It's out to bid already for the 27th. And painting. The roofs, the RFP is ready to go for architectural engineering for the North Wyndham roof. That's in the capital improvement also, and that has a January 30th walkthrough. The oil tanks, the RFP went out on February 11th, February 20th is a walkthrough. The bids are due March 11th because the oil tanks have to come out at all four elementary schools and at Wyndham Center and North Wyndham because they're not hooked up to natural gas, they have to be replaced. Sweeney and Natchog, they're removed only, and Sweeney has an underground propane tank that also needs to be removed. Other business projects to be closed out are, some of the schools are in audit. One is still kind of hanging out there, and one, two, we are awaiting info on, projects that have already happened in the past. These might tie up future projects if we're getting state reimbursement, so it's something Dr. Youngberg's been keeping an eye on. And I call her Dr. Youngberg because saying Tracy sounds like I'm talking about myself in the third person. New business, the automatic flushers and faucets that have been put in are expensive to replace, and so going forward, Dawn is looking into the options of, as they start to break down or stop working or need significant maintenance, replacing them with regular faucets. The only concern we have is that Natchog, I mean, at Barrow's, it's supposed to be a lead silver school. We are looking into what we can change there and still stay within the parameters of the grant and everything else, so. That's the only thing that she had concerns about there. And then maintenance and upkeep is the last part that I'm going to talk about to build into the new budget. The high school will need to replace a 200-gallon domestic hot water tank that's leaking. Natchog needs a new hot water heater. It's a 75-gallon hot water heater, it needs to be, the old one needs to be removed and a new one needs to be replaced. Also in Natchog, the air handler for the gym, I was unaware, and I was glad that Dr. Youngberg brought it to my attention, they play, they go for gym in the gym with their jackets on until they start sweating, and then they take their jackets off. And they act like it's an everyday thing, and that's not appropriate or needed or necessary. So Dawn's working on getting quotes for those things, and we'll be... So, Dawn's working on getting quotes for those things, and we'll be building that into next year's budget, the one we're going to start talking about next week. And Roger NATO, who sits on the Board of Finance, is our kind of liaison, he's been coming to all of our committee meetings, he was talking about looking into energy-saving dollars, federal energy-saving dollars, as we start to replace oil tanks and hot water heaters, they're going to be more energy-efficient, and there could be dollars out there that we could use to put towards these projects, to defer the local costs. So, Dr. Youngberg took all of those notes, and Dawn, and they're going to start looking into that. And the very last part is for the committee, two years ago, we started talking about looking at the five-year facilities master plan, 10-year facilities master plan, and renovating it, like, updating it, talking about what we're going to do with all of our schools, the lifespan of them, which ones are most appropriate, which ones are least, coming together, we came together with a plan six or seven years ago now, so it's time for that to be updated. So, I asked Dr. Youngberg, and she agreed, to consider putting, hiring an architect or consulting firm into the plan. We did try to do it last year, but with the budget where it was last year, the Board voted down, adding that, you know, putting that forward and saving that funds for somewhere that it was more needed. So, I'm very aware that at some point, it may get cut, but my committee is just kind of getting updates and giving updates at this point, we're not doing any real movement, so I thought it would be useful to start thinking about hiring a company or an architect to take a look at our facilities master plan and updating it, having conversations with us and with the community about where things need to move, and how we could best use our space in our buildings.
Thank you very much, that's a lot.
Yes.
You're very busy people. So, on that final point, I realize that that was cut last year. It is really important, I think, if we're going to be able to convey to the community what the needs are going to be over time, it's important for us to do that planning work, and to not let it just fall by the wayside, because we have too many other things on our plate, or whatever, because then we run into situations that are emergency situations, too.
Right, leaking roofs and stuff like that, so.
I had a question, I'm wondering if it has been considered, or is in the plan, to have solar panels in all of the schools, to help us with the expenditure of electricity and heating, et cetera?
Barrows, Sweeney, and the high school?
The new...
Middle school, Barrows, Sweeney. Not the high school, Barrows, Sweeney, the middle school, and North Wyndham, all have solar panels on their roofs.
Okay.
But not the high school. Part of the high school renovation, I can attest, we've talked about adding them to the high school, we're looking, you know, within our budget constraints, too, we can only do so much with, you know, the money that we've been given, we've made some hard decisions, like closing the pool and stuff like that, so, yeah, it kills me, Paula, trust me, but going forward, those are other, you know, discussions. The Town Council has said it will be a lead gold school, that's obviously our outward goal, but that comes with a price tag attached to it as well, so those are all things that we're considering. So, Natchog and Wyndham Center, besides the high school, are the only two other buildings that don't have solar panels on the roof. It saves money, you have to have that output at first, and until we have it, we don't, we don't have it.
There's no grants for that?
There are no grants, funds to assist with solar panels for the schools that don't have?
There are, but sometimes that takes away from our state reimbursement, too, and so we have to weigh, the state says, "Well, you're getting $4,000 from Eversource," or wherever, well, we're taking that off of your reimbursement rate.
Right, okay.
So, if that funding doesn't come through, and it, you know, there's all the contingencies, you have to do this, and you have to do this, and it has to be this, if something happens and it doesn't fall through, that extra burden falls on the taxpayer, and we always try to avoid that. So, the state's more of a sure thing, there's hoops to jump through there, but we're used to those hoops, so there's all different things that we consider. And when we do any project, the building committee that's appointed to that project takes a look at all of those things before they move forward. The Board of Ed does not do that project.
Right.
Any other comments?
No, that's good.
Thank you for, thank you for all that work, that's a lot, Tracy. Policy Committee?
Oh, yes.
Il is not here, I'm assuming you're reporting?
Yes, so we met last month, and we decided to prioritize the personnel policies, and look at them in clusters, because so many relate to each other. And now, we have started a process of looking until how CAPE, or the Connecticut Association of Works of Education, can help with that, those updates, and streamline the process, but we will continue working on personnel policies, and come back with you, to you for first readings and final approvals.
Thank you. So, the CAPE resource is a free resource.
Yes.
And so, are...
It's actually not free.
Wait, wait, we're, we're paying CAPE.
Correct.
There's something like an additional fee to that, too.
It's like an $18,000 or $19,000 membership fee, it's not free.
Yes, but for these resources, we're not paying money.
Yeah, they send the resources because we're members.
Right.
Because we're members, but it wouldn't cost anything extra to utilize it.
I just wanted to make sure, that people, when you say CAPE is going to be helping with us, I want to make sure that people know that this is part of our membership benefit, yes.
And hopefully, utilizing them better, and coordinating better, so that our policies are updated.
So that we don't have to create things out of, out of nothing, and also, we don't have to pay an attorney to do that.
Absolutely.
We're going to take, we're going to take a look at the, what CAPE recommends, okay?
Yep.
That's great. Thank you for ferreting out that resource. Any questions? Executive Committee, there's nothing to report since our last meeting, because we didn't have our meeting. We'll be meeting, have a special meeting sometime this month, stay tuned. So, we're on to the Wyndham Middle School presentation.
We are on to the Wyndham Middle School presentation, so this is the second in a series of presentations that I've asked the principals to provide the Board of Ed, so that you understand what's happening in our buildings, who they are, I think we're going to be able to queue up that presentation, I'm hoping. Thanks, Chris. So, for tonight, I have Dr. Marcus Ware, the principal of the middle school, and Mr. Alby Harris, the assistant principal overseeing grade seven, and they're going to talk to you tonight about Wyndham Middle School, and all the wonderful things that are happening We probably need to get you each a mic, and...
Oh, this one's right here, that is...
Actually, he has a cordless right behind you, yeah, there you go. Oh, yeah, you need the...
Right there.
Thank you, good evening, good evening.
You can sit, you can stand, you can walk around like a talk show host, whatever makes you feel more comfortable.
I feel more comfortable standing, and Alby can choose what he wishes to do. So, good evening, Board of Education members, central office officials, and also the public. My name is Marcus Ware, Dr. Ware to my students, I'm the principal at Wyndham Middle School, and this evening, I have Mr. Alby Harris with me to give you the presentation about what's going on at WMS. So, I'm going to stand over here, because I like looking at people like this. So, who are we at Wyndham Middle School? So, this is a little bit of demographic information that you all can see, I will paraphrase it for you. So, in our school, we have roughly 645 students, a lot of personality, and of those students, we have, 85% of those students are identified as high-needs. Within that breakdown, we have some specific demographics, most of our students are Hispanic or from Latin origins, 81%, followed by our white students, 15%, and our blacks students, 3%, and then we have a small pocket of students who are multiracial, multi-ethnic, and they identify, so around 2%. So, if you go back up, and I went out of order, we have a high ELL population, about 27%, English language learners, as well as our special education percentages are around 21%. Free or reduced lunch, most of our students qualify, 80% of our students there. So, you can just see that we have a little bit of everything going on in the middle school. Here's a nice picture of the team, Dr. Yvette Santi Esteban actually is under the weather this evening, so I mandated her to stay home, and so she's the eighth-grade assistant principal, followed by Mr. Alby Harris, the seventh-grade assistant principal, myself, of course, I oversee the whole school, but I also oversee compañeros, and Ms. Joanne Hadad, who's also under the weather, who's joining us by spirit, sixth-grade assistant principal.
And Board members, I'm sorry, it looks like I didn't get you copies of the presentation, but I will, so I'm sorry you can't follow along like you did the high school presentation, I'll take care of that, and I apologize.
Okay.
Sorry, Dr. Ware.
No problem. And so, here we are, we have a bulletin board, soon as you enter Wyndham Middle School, about everyone. I've actually had a conversation with people in the beginning of the year, said, "We are just more than the administration." So, our teachers are up here, our custodians are up here, cafeteria workers, et cetera. So, if you haven't seen it, please pay attention, next time you're at Wyndham Middle School, say, saying hello to us. The next slide, we just want to explain to you what we do at Wyndham Middle School, we assume you know, but, you know, if you work it, you live it, you can explain it in a different way. So, we are all about the small learning community, so we work with our students about the nurturing, the social-emotional piece, especially when we look at how, where our students come from, so especially in grade six, they're coming from elementary school, we realize they're one summer removed from that one classroom field. So, we are really good about giving them their core classes, but also having a team experience. So, we have grades six, seven, and eight, we have compañeros who span grades six, seven, six, seven, eight as well, and we have a group of specialized programs. One of them is our new arrivals program, which is an ELL supportive program for students who are new to our country, and who need ELL support, and language acquisition support. We have our Cougars program, Plaid, Stride, and Camino Alto, all that fall under the People's Services Department, Special Education Department, in which our students need more supports and more services. We also provide at Wyndham Middle School, we're about the exploration, about what our kids get exposure to. Our opportunities through clubs and athletics, actually, right now, our boys are about to play a 7:45 game, so I will be departing after, but focusing on this right now. So, our students have the opportunities to participate in clubs, athletics, as well as their specials curriculum, the arts, the music, the Spanish, the physical education aspect, as well as we have our bus after-school enrichment programs, Monday through Thursday, which a good number of our students, in which they participate. We also focus on social-emotional supports, I know that's a district initiative, however, I'm going to break it down a little bit further later on, to tell you how we do it at Wyndham Middle School, as well as, we know this is all preparation for high school, it's coming, and it comes quickly. Grade six, we take a little bit of the Willimantic history, and you'll see, we are working into cities, so Frog City, sixth grade, we have two teams, pow and bam, and so, those were named after action heroes when I arrived last year, and we just kept a little bit of that flavor. So, we have roughly about 170 students here in our sixth grade, they're broken into two teams, they have four core teachers, a special education teacher who services that grade, as well as a ESOL teacher who services the grade, and a counselor. Some incentive opportunities, I bring this up because we know they're coming from elementary school, they want the incentive, so we have something called pow bucks, so they can use this, these monies to get different snacks, different things that the teachers have for offer in their room, to, you know, liven up the classroom environment. And again, we focus on the nurturing community, so we do, we really spend a lot of time trying to talk to kids about that transition, those transitional years, which are called middle school. Instructional focus is in class, not limited to, we have data teams, I mean, throughout grade six to eight, we have data teams every other week, in which we talk about our data, and what is it telling us about how to service our students. In the sixth grade specifically, we, they, in their data teams, they use the data to target, have small group instruction, and that changes, because depending on what our iReady data's telling us, we change it, as well as lost links, we change what their services need. We have content meeting, which the sixth-grade teachers focus on information from the text, or text-dependent questions, because we know this prepares them for S-Back, and actually, the more that we expose them to them, the better the chances are that they'll be successful in S-Back. So, one of the projects that the sixth grade is working on, I had the chance to speak with the teachers today, is they're working on what is an activist, and I don't know if you remember, I don't remember what an activist was, sixth grade, however, the teachers, English teachers, are actually breaking it down, and allowing the kids to have choice, or choices, in which they want to explore. So, they are using the internet, they're looking up these activists, and they're putting together a poster presentation, in which they will present out, so they get that feeling like, "I'm doing it right now," which is a little nervous, but you get that real-world experience, but you learn a lot of interesting vocabulary words, and it's a real-world application, because, as you know, we live in some interesting times. And rounding out to sixth grade, we just passed day 90, I call it days 91 through 180, and so, next days brings us, we're preparing for S-Back, we know the minute we come back for spring break, it's that window, and we're really trying to make sure that we show, we help our kids show what they know on this test. We have a win block, what I need, which is our intervention block, in which we target students for small instruction, but we also target them on the social-emotional side. We actually have identified kids who cannot be in their academic win, and we bring them into their social-emotional win, because they're just not ready to regulate themselves. And last but not least, that transition day, they're starting to understand, they're becoming seventh graders. So, we have a transition day where we transition up each grade every year, and this, that's in the coming days, in which we want them to get a little taste and preparation for what the middle school year of seventh grade looks like. At this time, I'll invite Mr. Alby Harris up, because this is his grade, seventh grade.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Youngberg, members of the guests, and the community at home, I'm an administrator for the seventh grade, this is our largest cohort at Wyndham Middle School, we have 210 seventh graders, and if you know, seventh grade is a very unique and special year, all right? A lot happens in seventh grade, it's very social, and to support those students, we have 2.5 teams, we have 10 teachers, okay? This is a transition we made after the first half of the year, because the class sizes were so large, high twenties, low thirties, and so we brought in two more teachers to bring that class size down, to give more individual instruction. We looked at the students, and tried to place them accordingly to their needs. As you know, in middle school, it's about caring for the kids, looking at each individual student, and putting them in the place where they can be successful. As I mentioned, seventh grade, very challenging, so we had the first 90 days, and we reset for the second 90 days. My hope, as always, is over that winter break, there is a transition in seventh grade, where they start off, they're doing a lot, and we're really transitioning forward, focusing on academics, also, social-emotional learning, which we focus on with the students in the morning, but also in some of our win groups, to really, in a smaller setting, so they can work on how their behavior impacts not only themselves, their peers, but also the instruction time. We also look at our data team meetings, focus on the students, and place them accordingly to what tier they're in, to give them proper instruction. Looking at our math and ELA, getting ready for the S-Back, and our Core One instruction, focusing in math inequalities, absolute value, integers, and real-world applications, I'm familiar with this, because oftentimes, I take a group of students who may not be able to manage themselves in the classroom, but I bring them to my office, I do math instruction with them, using a whiteboard, so I do a lot of one-on-one instruction, or in small groups, to support the students, who may have difficulty focusing in the classroom. We also have many new staff members to seventh grade, and so we have an instructional coach who works with them very closely, on both instruction, setting up their classroom, classroom management with those new teachers, and that's been very helpful to them, working with them also, going into the rooms, doing observations, and really setting them up to be successful. As Dr. Ware mentioned, at the middle school, we really try to have our teachers meet in groups, in their teams, to look at the students, called kid meetings. So, we look at them both academically, and then behaviorally, so that we can come together with a counselor, our special ed teacher, ELL teacher, make contacts with parents, and really focus on those individual needs of students to provide support. In addition, we have data team meetings, attend every data team meeting with the teachers to look at instruction, and we use our iReady bench bike data, we also use examples from the classroom, and really see where the students are progressing, and then also look at where they need to make progress. And then we use our win block, is what I need, and they meet every day for about 45 minutes, where in smaller classes, even break it down more, just, I'm not sure if you're aware, but in the win block, also, we do Read 180, for those students who need support in literacy, we do Math 180, those students who need support in math, and those are specialized instructors that do that. In addition, our major focus for the next, what I would say, 90 days, is really looking at the students, thinking about second semester in seventh grade, also moving into eighth grade, our focus is really is preparation for high school. I have a lot of conversations with students on really doing well academically, with attendance, and with behavior, so they have opportunities to be successful at high school, and have We're going to transition to eighth grade, Dr. Ware's going to handle eighth grade, thank you. Thank you.
And Dr. Santi Esteban couldn't be here this evening. I saw him filling in for her. Our eighth grade population is about 155 students. We have two teams, and you may not be able to see the names up here. The teams, the students had a say in what their names are, Team Achievers and Team Donovan. For those who may recall, we lost a student over the summer unexpectedly, and the students in that class felt it special to name their team after him. So that's where Team Donovan comes from. Eighth grade, so we're focusing on the text-dependent questions, or we call them TDQs. We're honing on the algebra skills. We're trying to get them prepared for the algebra exam that they take at the end of the year, as well as we put a lot of kids in the Algebra Ready Boot Camp that we have over the summer. We're preparing them for high school, as we've been saying all evening, because we know high school comes quickly. And more specifically, throughout the whole building, we focus on the next generation science standards, or NGSS. And so in speaking with one of the science teachers today, she said, "I want them to be able to explain, why do we have seasons? It's through inquiry." So they have a big project going on right now. You'll see eighth graders looking very frazzled, because it's a lot of information. Even some of them asking me, because they know I was a former science teacher. So what we know to be true is that learning science through inquiry is the way to do it. So NGSS is how we actually codify the science education learning in our building. The next steps for our eighth grade, we are preparing for S-Back. We're monitoring attendance. We also know this is where they get a little bit of fever, they think they're in high school already, but no, 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 we got to hold on to them, make sure that they're still coming to school, still being attentive, as well as, we took a big step this year, and we are bringing 64 of them to Washington DC. And so that's a lot of, that's been a lot of the buzz talking going on, and a lot of the students who are not going, we're having something back at the school, because we understand that everyone couldn't go. Jumping over into our compañeros, or dual-language program, so we have roughly about 110 students in our compañeros program, grades, spanning grades six through eighth. We introduced a new teacher to the sixth grade team this year, so we have two sixth grade classrooms, where the seventh and eighth grade students go between four teachers. And so the target is 50% of their core instructions is in Spanish. And so it's not uncommon to walk into a classroom and hear Spanish or English, or depending on the class, they have bridging weeks. So you won't hear English, I mean, Spanish, but then the next week you will. So there's, bridging weeks are that time to introduce vocabulary, review vocabulary, so that kids who are struggling or who are not comfortable with their Spanish language, sometimes like I am, they actually get the support they need. So in compañeros, in our win blocks, they have an added component. We're not just looking at math and English, we're looking at Spanish, and Spanish acquisition and comfortability with it. So some of those students receive some of their supports to beef up their Spanish fluency, as well as there's vocabulary walls. It's very common to walk into the room and see the vocabulary in English and Spanish. Again, but you see, you can speak. So a lot of the times, it's very common to see the students contributing that, or even actually referring to that, so they can recall information. And historically, just a little shout out to the compañeros, they really do perform. If you look at our S-Back data in Wyndham Middle School, they really have been outperforming their counterparts. So just a little shout out to them.
Okay, as we mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, Wyndham Middle School is made up of many smaller learning communities. As we mentioned, we have sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, we have the compañeros. But we also have some really outstanding, small, small learning communities for our really unique and specialized students. As we mentioned, new arrivals, which has a longstanding at Wyndham Middle School, those students who have come to our community, to our middle school, who do not speak English at all. And it's a very small cohort, that gets individual instruction based on their needs and their abilities in a small room. We start off small. As they make progress, we then move them slowly out into other courses, or working with our ELL teachers or bilingual teachers. It's a slow progression, so that they can learn the language and have the supports they need to be successful. In addition, we have some programs for our special ed students. And the first one is Cougars, which is our severely disabled students. Ms. Petulek does an amazing job. If you have an opportunity to visit her classroom, she does an amazing amount of work with these students. In addition to working with Ms. Petulek and her staff, those students are also pushed into classrooms with the general ed teachers, okay, with supports. But we want to give them a balanced instruction, both in their program, but also with our general ed students. In addition, we have the Plaid program, all right, with Ms. Erickson, with our artistic students. Once again, a small environment, very safe, very comfortable, but with those students who are feeling more comfortable, they do go out to classes with our general ed population, they're supported, and we work with them very closely. Wonderful, wonderful programs. In addition, we have some programs for our students who have difficulty, all right? And they're small. Our Stride program is our alternative ed program at Wyndham Middle School. It was Chris List before that. It has a long history of working with those kids who just need that smaller environment, a quieter environment, and there's so much input at middle school, social input, but they need to start there. But those students also, they work to go mainstream. And then Camino Alto is working with the High Roads program, that's placed at the middle school, just like the High Roads program is placed at the high school. Those students also can earn their way into going to regularity classrooms, which we work with them, they're supervised, we support that. The whole goal is to take students who have some challenges, but we give them the supports, so they can increase their ability in moving to high school, so they can have a very positive experience. Wonderful, wonderful programs. Worked with them for many years. In addition, our special classes. So we had our core classes, right, for our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, all right, in their teams, but they also go to specials. When they go to their specials, they're not just in their teams, they're mixed by grade. And we have a list here. We have the art program, the library, music, which has chorus and ensembles, our physical education, Spanish, technology, and theater, and those are by grade, okay? We also have a longstanding after-school and enrichment program that work jointly together. The after-school program's been wonderful. It meets Monday through Thursday, after school. They do academic support, homework support, and then they do enrichment activities. A wonderful thing they're doing this year is Big Brother, Big Sister, with UConn and Eastern Connecticut State University. 15 students go to UConn, 15 go to Eastern Connecticut State University. So that's really great. And then our enrichment program, which has been going on for a number of years at Wyndham Middle School, we have providers, which are outside providers from the community, or we have staff that do additional work with the kids. Some of the things that we're working on this year are pottery, painting, we have new level support, martial arts, cooking, and volleyball. This year, the volleyball, I know some of those students, that female students do volleyball, they're so excited. They're doing this now in preparation to play volleyball in high school. And we're taking some of our students who might have challenges focusing in class, but they're very excited. So that's worked out very well. Tuesdays and Thursdays, and once again, it works in conjunction with the after-school program. And then we have our athletics in clubs, try to provide a variety of those, both fall, winter, and spring. Wrestling, basketball, baseball, softball, track, field, soccer, cross-country, and then some of our activities, National Junior Honor Society, Pride Alliance, and Student Council. So those opportunities to keep the students active. Number of the coaches are on our staff, some of the coaches are, come from the outside. As Dr. Ware mentioned, the boys' basketball team is playing right now in the gym here, in the championship game. So it's really great opportunities and a lot of supports for our students. The one thing I would like to say at this point is, Wyndham Middle School, I feel, is a very special place, because we support our students, but we also support our families. We have tremendous amount of meetings with families. We say, "Come in anytime." We get to work before seven, we leave whenever the day's end. We talk to parents and say, "Please, if you need to come, we'll meet you in the morning, middle of the day, after work, whenever," because we care about those students. And so we have many, many family meetings, which is great, because we want to work in conjunction with the families. In addition, we have a tremendous amount of support for the students. As you know, if you've been to the middle school, if you have children that went through grades six, seven, and eight, they need a lot of support. So we also have social workers, we have guidance counselors, one for each grade, we have school psychologists, and we have a number of wonderful staff. They could be the custodians, the secretaries, all work with our kids to make it a positive experience. So I just wanted to highlight that. It's a great community and works very hard. Dr. Ware now is going to come to the next slide. Thank you.
And as I stated earlier, we have the push for social emotional learning. I think one of the board members said earlier this evening that we support our students, and I couldn't agree more. We actually, there's, this is a collage of how I think everything interfaces with each other. We have our handbook, in which we have the rules and regulations of our schools, and we know students don't, you know, read it. We understand that. However, we know it and we live by it. And so a lot of this work comes through collaboration. So when I joined the team last year, I walked into trainings on restorative practice, restorative justice, Ruler. And so what we are really big about is, we're trying to instill a pattern or routine in our students to actually become reflective thinkers, reflective thinkers, and to have a responsibility in their actions, day in and day out. What does that look like? If you come through the homeroom period, which is 7:45 to 8:05 in the morning, the expectation is that teachers are checking in with students. It could be with Ruler, which is a tool, stands for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating your emotions. And there are four quadrants, and you probably are familiar with them already. However, we also learned a long time ago, our students may not have the vocabulary, or even understand what the word means. So you'll see a lot of the Ruler matrices that have words in them. And we'll sometimes say, pick one. And then they learn the word, but they also learn how to express themselves. We expect students to meet, also have circles. It's really common to see circles in classrooms when things go awry, or when something happens, or when kids want to discuss something, and it's really burning. For example, when the tragic, the tragedy happened a couple of weeks ago with Kobe Bryant, and teachers took the time to circle up, because kids really wanted to speak about it. So it's just some extra tools in our tool bag to really connect and make relationships with kids. And our SEL, or social emotional book read, The Explosive Child, is one that I did bring to the community, because as I say to the teachers often, if we're expecting the students to build their tool bag, we have to build ours too. So the book is expected to be another tool. It's not the only thing that you get to use in relating with a child, but The Explosive Child, if you can get a little hint from the name, it does. It deals with a lot of the things we see in working with our kids, and the stuff they bring from home, and they bring it to school, and we're expected to deal with it, talk to them, and still love them, and give them an education, or help them get their education. So as Mr. Harris was saying, this is something that, with our social workers, with the trainers of our teachers, we've put a lot of energy into, and we're still working it out. We're working out kinks. We have a lot of conversations about it, and we're going to keep moving forward with those things. Mr. Harris. And wrapping up, the celebrations at Wyndham Middle School. Last year, when I was hired on, I said, "You know what? We got to do more celebrations." So Dr. Youngberg alluded to it earlier, we actually had a 90-day perfect attendance celebration. 88 students had perfect attendance since August 28th up until, oh my goodness, February 5th. So that was day 90. And so what we did for them, my apologies, I learned where those are located now, thank you, Margaret Chady, but we had students receive a t-shirt, and it was, it's in dress code, so that was one of us thinking as admin. But it also said, "You know what? 90." This is designed on the t-shirts. So those students received a t-shirt, they also received an award certificate, as well as, they don't know it yet, but I have Dunkin' Donuts gift cards that I haven't given to them yet. So, and they also received some, a small packet of school supplies, because we know that we can always use school supplies. We had a bulletin board that actually was a countdown for it, and now that bulletin board has shifted, and now we're talking about the days at the end of the year, but we're trying to keep the momentum going, so kids hold that title. But we also are going to expand it to zero, 10, the zero days, one day, two days, because those are still milestone achievements. We also have something that didn't have room for Culture Night, where we asked the community to come on in, explain where you're from, talk to us about the food, the culture, the experience, where your family are from. And that's a big night. We get a big turnout from our families in the community. And last but not least, we're celebrating Black History Month. So every day, we actually celebrate a different African-American through the PA system, and while Ms. Joanne Haddad is out, I've been the voiceover in the morning. So we have been giving that information out to our students. In conclusion, I really hope that you understand that we see our jobs as helping kids not think that middle school is just not adable. It is a lot of work, it's definitely not a dull moment. However, you have to love it to be in it, and we love it, and that's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you, for being here. And I know you're probably anxious to get to the game, but are there any questions or comments? Yes, Katina?
So 27% of the population, or I understood, was English as a second language learners, and some of those are new arrivals. We learned last time here about the high school, that some of our kids come with interrupted, like, blocks of not having been in school at all. And I was wondering how you're addressing that, so that when they come to the high school, they will be, well, have more of their basic skills ready, or if you're doing any targeted education towards them?
I'll speak to that. No, absolutely. So if they're in our new arrivals program, we actually have a teacher and a tutor, so they actually have identified that. That's run by Yusma Bonnet and also Cynthia Flores at the middle school. And what you're saying is actually true. A lot of students have interruptions in their education, for whatever reason. So what does that targeted instruction looks like? It's coupled with, you know, doing lost links with a language or iReady, but we've realized they can't even access iReady to a certain degree, because the language is not there yet. So a lot of that is individualized instruction, straight taken from the curriculum, in which Yusma sits down, works with Dr. Mudambi, as well as works with Dr. Santi Esteban, to actually say, "This is where this kid, this child is at." So for example, we have children who do know, you know, you know this, they don't even speak Spanish, they speak another native tongue, and we introduce Spanish to them, and then we're trying to give them their academics in such a short amount of time. So what does that look like? In addition to the classroom, there are actually after-school supports, like Gube, and which Yusma Bonnet runs, where she specifically has after-school programs for her new arrival students, so they actually can feel comfortable, still get support, but also have a little fun in doing so. So that individualized support looks like, and we actually just talked about this, Dr. Mudambi and I, last week, we actually are revamping the new arrival schedule, to say, it doesn't need to look like the traditional schedule that you will see in the middle school. It may need, we may have to just give exceptional amounts of time, like in ELA supports, math supports, and everything in between, because we know they're just not there yet. So a lot of it falls onto the new arrivals teacher and the administrator who oversees it. And that's what we've been doing every time we get a new student in. I don't know if you want to add to that, Mr. Harris?
Any other questions? That was a lot of information to absorb. I can't wait to get the actual PowerPoint, to look through it more carefully, but this has been very helpful. Thank you very much for taking the time to put it together. Tracy?
Thank you, Dr. Ware and Mr. Harris. And just to let everyone know, I believe they videotaped the presentation, so that it can be played out, in case this one, you know, was difficult to hear or people couldn't see. So I think you were rock stars, movie stars, I should say, a little while ago this evening, right?
Yes, it's true. And I know it's up, because teachers have texted me that they've seen it already.
All right, so there we go. There's an opportunity for the public to see it as well, if they didn't catch it tonight. So thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
And good luck to your team.
Yes, good luck. So we have a handful of action items to work through, and the first item is a recommended approval of participation in the Healthy Food Certification Program. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? This information was all in your packets. Any questions?
Mary?
Yes?
We're authorizing both food and beverage. I don't have a problem with it, I just want to be clear about what we're authorizing, that's all.
That's a good question.
It said if we authorize food, we have to authorize beverage.
Yes. I believe that's correct.
I think that's what my understanding was.
I'm just being clear about what we're serving, that's all.
Okay. Any other questions?
How often do we have to do this? Yearly?
I don't know the answer to that. Annually?
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the floor? It's unanimous. Okay, next thing is recommended approval of an increase in tuition for Charles H. Barrow's STEM Academy of 3%. And there's an explanation, and, I mean, there's... And there's an explanation and, I mean, there's, this is in the packet. The Finance and Audit Committee discussed this in great detail last week and would like to recommend this to the board. Actually, six, six of the nine board members were present at that meeting during that discussion, but a couple of you weren't. So does anybody have any questions? Yeah, oh yeah, I need a motion. A motion.
So moved.
So moved by Tracy Lambert.
Second.
Seconded by Paula Haney.
Can I say something?
Yes, go right ahead.
Those that don't know or for anybody watching at home, we went four or five years after Barrows opened without tuition increases, even though costs increased to support that school. And the grant was flat. The grant doesn't increase from year to year. So we suddenly realized that we were paying more for out-of-town students out of our own budget than we were for our in-town students. So we've slowly been increasing, not by huge amounts, by 3%, what our expenses are to sending towns for them to be able to pick it up. And it's good that we're doing it earlier rather than later because other towns are putting their budgets together as well.
Right. That's, that's a good explanation. And another point that came up during discussion last week was that we looked at, you know, just what our overhead is, you know, through contractual obligations and things of that sort. And we can't just each year just not pass anything along to the out-of-town students that are sending, that we can't expect the taxpayers in Wyndham to make up all of that, that difference alone. So that's part of the reason we, this is a slightly larger increase than we have done in the past couple of years.
And affordable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
The next item is recommended acceptance of the award for the purchase of tilting kettles to be utilized in the Food Services Department at Wyndham High School. And we had a conversation about this and answered, questions were answered at our last board meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Tracy, seconded by Jaime. Any discussion about those tilting kettles? Okay. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. The fourth thing is acceptance of a donation from the Wyndham Middle School PTO. And I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Katina made the motion.
Second.
Paula.
With gratitude.
Paula seconded it with gratitude. Any questions about that? It's pretty nice, very nice. So, so all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. We're a very divided board tonight. And the last item for action before we go into public comment and then special, I mean, non-meeting, is recommended approval of the budget transfers. And that was in your packets. It's a big chunk of money that's being proposed. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula. How about a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jaime. Any discussion? Actually, probably somebody should give an explanation of this. Is there anybody who could give an explanation?
Rita.
Just an overview, just a quick overview. Rita?
Yeah.
A call on you to do that because Mark isn't here.
The big overview of most of these transfers are, they were in the wrong category in the budget or not budgeted appropriately. So we need to transfer, you know, the large amounts to cover expenses.
Right. And we had a lengthy discussion about it last week. There were pretty good explanations, I thought, for everything, so.
If you have any individual questions.
Any questions?
No, but I, a comment that I'm encouraged that all the items are now properly placed and being monitored and accounted for.
Right.
For the upcoming budget.
Mm-hmm.
Brings clarity and transparency.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. So with that, public comment, is there anybody who wants to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none. "The board's going to convene into a non-meeting to discuss collective bargaining strategy with respect to a teacher's contractual grievance and a proposed successor contract between the board and the custodial union." I need a motion, I think?
Moved.
So moved by Tracy, seconded by Paula. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to go into a non-meeting?
Aye.
It's unanimous. So we will go into a non-meeting at 8:16 PM and everybody, yes, yeah, everybody except the board members, the superintendent, any appropriate administrative staff and Jessica Ritter, our attorney, will stay in here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1674.41]